Welcome Winthrop and welcome to the Joint Town Council and Planning Board Meeting. This is April 22nd, 2021. It is 7:04 PM. And I'm calling the meeting to order and I am going to ask Denise to do a roll call of the council and the planning board members.
Okay, Counselor Jarrow.
Here.
Counselor Placot.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Tierrey.
Yep.
Counselor Honan.
Here.
Counselor LaConti.
Present.
Counselor Farino.
Here.
Vice President Christopam.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here.
Okay, now we will do the planning board.
Yes.
Robert Carroll.
Here.
Gina Demento.
Honor Merceret.
Here.
Christopher Boyce.
Here.
Steve Kudalakis.
Here.
Julia Wallace.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, there being a quorum of both boards, I will now call meeting to order and I would ask Counselor Farino to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance since he has a flag behind him and we'll go forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, all right, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to accept the review and recommendation from the Winthrop Planning Board. We are going to have one session of public comment to this meeting and I'm going to open up that session for public comment here at the beginning of the meeting and then we will go into the planning board's explanation, review, and recommendation that it is giving to the council. All right, the phone number for tonight's meeting is 1-646-558-8656 with an ID number of 880-562-78870 pound. Okay, I probably should have tried to do that on my other phone. All right, before we actually accept the first call, Denise, I can't see the people that are calling in, so you're going to have to let me know. We also got quite a bit of correspondence for this meeting and there was a letter that was sent and it was individually sent by a great number of people. I think Denise is going to read that letter now, that way it might eliminate some of the public comment and tell us who sent that letter to us, how many people did.
Okay, all right, we did receive a letter and it states, "As a resident of the Waldemar Palmyra and Wheelock neighborhood, I strongly suggest that determining the voting, the zoning of 141-151 Pauline Street, the Town Council and Planning Board set and include specific language reflective of a commitment to adhering to the future development of 141-151 Pauline Street, specifically identifying the parcel of land facing Waldemar Avenue and Palmyra Avenue incompatible. Design height depth with use of facing properties with the existing homes in the neighborhood. I also request that the town provide public notice and opportunity for public hearings prior to any zoning vote." This came from, that original letter was from David and Lisa Howard. We received the same letter from Vinnie Rizioni, Kathleen Millward, Robert Lento and Michelle, Jill Pearson, Max and Sally Helpern, Judith Texera, Susan Gibbons, Cheryl Howard, Ashlyn Howard, and Patricia Haynes. We also received a letter in support of the Winthrop Planning Board proposal as is from Allison Casey Duer and Alexis Stevens. And we received a letter from past council president Peter Gill in reference to the information he had sent previously to our planning board and to the town council in reference to the zoning. He gives information on it, which will be attached to these minutes. That's it to me.
Okay, okay. We're getting a little bit of a feedback. The situation is tonight's meeting is to accept the review and recommendation of the planning board. Once we accept this, it goes to the Town Council's Committee on Rules and Ordinance to come up with the actual ordinance. They can adopt the recommendation entirely that's coming from the planning board or they can change it. They have 90 days to act on it and then the council has to vote within 90 days as to whether we're accepting the proposal, changing the proposal, or whatever. So the public is going to have more than tonight's opportunity to be heard, to speak, to attend meetings. There will be at least one or maybe more hearings of the Rules and Ordinance Committee while they are deliberating on this recommendation and then there will be a actual public hearing in the actual town council meeting on the night that we do vote for. So there's probably at least two more opportunities other than tonight to discuss this topic before it's actually voted on by the council, which does have to occur within 90 days from tonight if we accept this recommendation as received tonight. Okay, public comment, Denise, would you please run that? I'm going to try to come on with my telephone, so if you see me and the attendees, would you try to bring me over? You're muted Denise.
What a night. If the attendee has any questions, please raise your hand. Okay, the first one is Steven Hines. Can you hear us Steven?
I am, I mean, I'm first, yeah, hi, how are you? All right, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Steven Hines, Precinct 6, also a business owner in the Center Business District. I attended all of the planning board meetings that had to do with the recommendation that's being made today and I sort of just want to echo what I've said before. We're sort of in an unfortunate situation where if we, if you limit the height on the portion of the building that faces the Palmyra-Waldemar area, you sort of make that lot where the middle school site is sort of financially undevelopable for most people, most developers that I've talked to that are specifically interested in this building in particular and have been through the building quite a few times prior to my involvement have all sort of said the same thing. If you want to keep the building as it is, that's great, turn it into condos the way that it is, add another floor and let's go, keep the building standing. But if the town seems, my perspective, the town seems to be pretty committed to removing the building. By limiting the height on that parcel in particular, you make the lot itself undevelopable financially and what will happen is you push the developable portion over to where the rink is and so you have the people on Palmyra that want to keep the height down on one side and you have the people on the rink that want to keep the rink on the other. You can't have both of those things. The town has got to make a decision, do we want to keep the rink and develop the middle school site or do we want to keep the middle school the height that it is or like properties like the ones around it and develop the rink site? But both of those things are not going to happen simultaneously. It's going to be one or the other and so, you know, it's again unfortunate situation, but I hope the town can sort of make a decision on whether or not the middle school will be developed or the rink site will be developed and I hope that it's the middle school site because I'd like the rink to stay. I think all of us can agree on that and there's my point, thanks.
Thank you Steven, next.
Okay, we have Peter Gill.
Hi Peter. Peter, are you on?
He's muted. Am I on?
You're on Peter.
Yes, now. With all due respect, I have to disagree with Steven that it's not an either/or, either Waldemar-Palmyra or the rink. But I'd like to take this opportunity to just enter into, I like to read a portion of the letters that I had sent both to the planning board and to the council, if that's all right. To the, the night after the planning board made their recommendation, I just wrote them a note that, that I appreciate your sincere and diligent efforts in this extremely complex assignment to make a recommendation to the town council regarding 151 to 141 Pauline. However, it is great disappointment and concern that I reviewed the proposed recommendation that you delivered and voted at your meeting. Although the neighborhood requested and I agree that the property should not be zoned in Center Business District, I understand the rationale of the board to zone it as such and I understand the recommendation to combine the parcels and treat the combined parcels as one for purposes of zoning. However, a major concern expressed regarding future zoning and use of the property facing Waldemar and Palmyra has always been that it should be developed with a project that is compatible with the neighborhood. It appeared during the board's deliberation last evening, that's, this is the day after their last meeting, excuse me, that the recommendation would be to zone the whole parcel as CBD, but the neighborhood concerns would be addressed at the Waldemar Ave. The proposed recommendation for that portion to merely require a 10-foot setback does not address the concerns of the development to be compatible with the neighborhood. I then followed that up with a letter last week to the council and to the planning board. And just a quick background, after many communications and discussions with the council, the planning board, the Joint Committee of Economic Development Rules and Ordinance, as well as the citizen petition and comments that were presented at the October 1st, 2019 joint public hearing of these two bodies, that again, something should be compatible with the existing neighborhood. Following that meeting, it was decided and voted that the property would not be put into the CBD. I understand it was not to be put in the CBD at that time, but it was for that time specifically. Whatever is the final zoning decision on this parcel, given the concerns of the neighborhood, the compatibility, we respectfully request that any development or part thereof within 100 feet of Waldemar Ave, Palmyra Street, be for residential use only and not exceed the 35 feet in height. Suggestions or recommendations to achieve that compatibility would be an option one to subdivide the frontage into two, subdivide the frontage on Pauline, excuse me, on Palmyra and Waldemar into two, three, or four buildable lots, each of 5,000 square feet or more, to permit the construction of a conventional two-family home on each of these lots, creating a use of this portion of the parcel compatible with the surrounding residential homes. We compare this to the odd-numbered parcels on Waldemar Ave. They're all standard two-family homes, each built on a lot of approximately 5,000 square feet. Option two is if a developer desires to use or modify the existing middle school building or portion thereof, or a footprint or portion thereof, a building height of 35 feet and residential use only in this area should not exceed the present height. And I did include in that a copy of the petition that was presented to the joint board at the joint meeting on October 1st, 2019. Thank you very much for your help, for your allowing me to talk and I appreciate your efforts in this very, very difficult, complex issue. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, Karen Chavez.
Hello, everybody, Karen Chavez, Precinct 2. As you know, the rink is my biggest concern. I cannot imagine not having a rink in Winthrop. I am a hockey nana, have been for a lot of years and I am sure a lot of people listening tonight will attest to that. My granddaughter played for many years with the youth hockey, with the high school varsity. My grandson played with the youth hockey and is now a junior at the high school and will continue to play varsity hockey. As far as Waldemar Avenue and Wheelock Street is, I think you have to think about these people that live there and what they have done over the last few years. You know, not few years, I shouldn't even say that, it's probably 20 years since they had the Winthrop middle school property there, which seemed to blend in with what is there now as far as their property is concerned. I think you need to look at this and decide that whatever you're going to put there has to continue to blend in with that property, whether it be Waldemar Avenue or Wheelock Street. But please, don't do anything to the rink. I want you to keep the rink out of this. The rink is a part of the town that the town does not even contribute to by means of any monies whatsoever. The rink is an enterprise fund that is certainly only, only monies going in and out is what is, what comes in and what goes out. Please think of this, I know it's difficult and I know it's a difficult decision for you guys to make, but please, keep everybody in mind, thank you.
Thank you Karen. Okay, let's see. All right, we have Cheryl Howard.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, everybody, Cheryl Howard, Precinct 2. I've actually just purchased a house on Waldemar Ave with my daughters and we are concerned about what is to go at the middle school. Obviously, something has to go there and I do understand and appreciate your efforts to recommend it being in the CBD, I get it. But what I want you to understand, and I think that you all comprehend this, is that we want it to be residential at that end on Waldemar and two and a half stories should be the maximum at that end. When you come down Waldemar, it's really a beautiful, open street. We should not be facing a giant building at that end. With regards to the rest of the lot, I think you could increase your height as you go down Pauline Street, similar to what's happening on Somerset or what is to happen on Somerset, so that you could include more stories and commercial on the first floor down on Pauline Street down near CVS. So I think that that could be accomplished there, I think everything could be accomplished being zoned as CBD, as long as we restrict the end of Waldemar to two and a half stories for residential only, because you are budding the Texera House there, it is a budding residential. I also hope that you consider leaving a nice piece of land between whatever development and the rink. I think we should have a buffer there of green space, that would be nice for the town. And I think that's it and I do appreciate everybody's input and it's, it's been great, it's a nice process that I've seen, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, David, I don't have your last name.
Hi Denise, this is actually Lisa Howard, not David Howard.
Lisa.
So, thank you everyone for being at this meeting. I know meeting after meeting after meeting becomes exhausting, so I'll be short. So, I am Lisa Howard, Precinct 2, owner of 27 Waldemar Ave for 28 years now. I'm not related to Cheryl Howard, who happens to own a house two doors down to me, but I am the offspring of Peter Gill. So I want to echo both my father's as well as Cheryl's and Mrs. Chavez's input. I may be, and this is my personal reflection, one of the most impacted people in this decision, so hopefully you will listen to what I have to say. I am a hockey parent, so I more than value what the Winthrop Hockey Rink has done for my children, especially my daughter, who played hockey, varsity hockey from 6th grade through high school, maybe the longest-standing varsity player in the history of Winthrop and it carried her on to college and without the rink and the availability of that rink, that may never have happened for her. I'm also a 28-year resident, two houses separated from the old middle school, which has sat vacant for several years and prior to it being vacant, I held an office in that building for several years, so my commute was not bad. The third part of my probably being the most impacted by this is my understanding as a town employee of the impact on what is done with that building overall on our community, whether that be the impact on our infrastructure with our DPW, our impact on our police department with the number of people that may take up residence there, as well as the impact on our fire department for the same reason as the police department and most importantly, my institutional knowledge of the impact on the public school itself, being a school that does not have a lot of extra seats, although we've bought several chairs and desks in the past month, we are pretty tight in terms of our overall capacity for new growth within the school system. I would say that, you know, in echoing the height and the residential face of that property to our residential neighborhood is extremely important to me. I have spoken to a number of my neighbors and was pretty much the spearhead of that cut-and-pasted email that you had received. I want to make sure that our community and our neighborhood is heard and respected. I think that we have talked a lot about the respect we have for the planning board and the amount of time and effort folks have put into developing this property. It's not overly fun to look at an empty piece of property, quite frankly, my kids in the past have been a little bit scared, they think there's ghosts in there, they probably are, and we want to see nothing more than that property be developed. We'd also like to keep the value of our properties, that we are very thankful for this community's increase in property values, that we'd like to keep it that way and we truly believe, I'll speak for the six, actually seven people now in my house, that would like to keep our property value up and having a residential piece of property facing us, we feel that that would be the best for our property values as well as our living and our, you know, just living in this neighborhood. Waldemar Ave, as some of you know, is a, can become a speed zone if there's anything happening at the light, people use Waldemar Ave as a cut-through. I can only see that increasing with the development of the property, which will be nice, however, again, having that cut-through be for a residential purpose would be the best. So I thank the planning board for all the time and effort you've put into this and I just ask that the council, as we go through this process over the next 90 days, be very mindful of the impact of the property once it is developed and how that may flush out in terms of the cost to build it and the income that will be coming in over the years. I would strongly encourage people to do a deep dive or a theory of action into how much money we will actually receive over the long term as opposed to a one-shot deal. So again, I thank you for your time. You will hear more from me as Lisa Howard, the resident of Waldemar Ave and our community group, the Waldemar-Palmyra and Wheelock Street Neighborhood Association, thank you.
Thanks Lisa. Okay, we have Jack Dowd.
Good evening. The last time the planning board posted meeting minutes on their page on the Winthrop website is October 1, 2019. That is a year and a half ago. How is anybody to know what happens at a planning board meeting? I did try to revisit a Winthrop Zoom meeting a couple of months ago and after two days, I was given a password to YouTube in order to watch the meeting. And I had to watch the meeting again to be able to quote a meeting member. The meeting minutes should be produced on paper, easily accessed for public knowledge. In 1972, the Quinn Act was passed by a vote of the people of Massachusetts. Article 97 became a law with this vote. Article 97 protects open space, parkland, and a lot of other entities from change. Ingleside Park falls under this law. It has been proven time and again that the land that the planning board intends to sell is parkland. The state of Massachusetts is well aware of these conditions and there was a state grant given to the town to improve the park a number of years ago. The reason why top management people are leaving employment of this town is the unreasonable conditions that they are exposed to, including the sale of parkland. Thank you very much.
Okay, if anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Yes, this is Brad Penoe, we have a hand raised. Yes, so we live at Waldemar Avenue and we'd like to also say thank you for spending a great process, try to attend as many of these meetings as we could, as we're also very interested about how the property across the street shall be developed and we just wanted to also weigh in and echo some of the other sentiments here tonight that having a residential element across the street is something that's very important to us and I'm going to really keep it quick because I think you have talked some lines I really put quite well. Thank you again, that's all we have to say.
Thank you, okay. Again, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you're on a telephone and you'd like to speak, please hit star six. Okay, at this time, we have no other public comment. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, all right, at this time, we have no other public comment. Oh wait, we have one more, Michelle Lento. Can you hear us Michelle?
Yes. Hi, oh sorry, I didn't know I could join by audio this way, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just wanted to echo what Lisa Howard said and, and I really like her suggestion that a thorough dive into the financials of, you know, long-term gains of properties on this street versus what might be brought in by, you know, retail businesses and, and really also just the struggles that the retail owners have had in the center, you know, really give me pause, I, you know, what happens in five, 10 years if those businesses don't do well or if, you know, so many, so many fleeting businesses in this, in this town, there's, I don't know, there isn't, there just isn't enough consumer support or, or competition to, you know, maybe they can't be competitive to, to get local support, I don't know, but I don't want to see, while I, you know, I love a cute coffee shop, but I mean, I don't want to see an empty vacant retail space at the end of my street and, which is another reason why keeping it residential, I think, is really important, so I just wanted to add that. I, I, there's nothing I haven't already heard that I don't agree with about, you know, keeping the parcel facing Wheelock and Waldemar residential, so thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Could you hear me Denise?
Yes, we can.
Okay, if that, if that's the end of the public comment, I would ask the planning board chairman to give us his review and recommendation informally, is someone going to read it into the record from the planning board?
Oh, good question. I had, thank you, Town Council President Boncory, I have some slides and I do have the recommendation, it's, you know, multiple pages, I'm not sure, do you want that just attached to the record? I'm happy to put it up on the screen as well and.
I would suggest that we put it up on the screen and then maybe, you know, officially present the recommendation.
Okay.
I, you know, everybody I think on the council has read the review and recommendation, received it by email a couple of days ago and I'm sure everybody's had an opportunity to look at it, this has been going on since 2013 and, you know, every single committee in town has put some input into you coming up with this. I mean, I know you went through everything from. I mean, uh, I know you went through everything from uh Win thirty, thirty, twenty thirty to the uh Economic Development uh Committee, uh, the Joint Committee with Rules and Ordinance and Economic Development. They had been working on it for for months, uh, as well as uh the Senate Business District Master Plan has been going on for probably seven years. So I mean, I know all of that stuff has been put into your recommendation and your review. So please uh go forward and present.
Okay. Um, okay, thanks all. I'm gonna share my screen if uh this will let me. It looks like it will. Um, do you guys see this? Okay. Um, I've got it wide, so and I can roll. Um, there was a question I just want to clear up right away. We were referencing a a plot plan that had identified the middle school site as uh forty-five Paulina Street. I think the clarification there is it's one fifty-one and one
Yes.
one Paulina Street. So I just don't, I want to confuse someone if they Google and find out that that's the E.B. Newton. We're we're not talking about the E.B. Newton here today, so I'm sorry about that. Um, uh, and I can, I can send a revision uh on that to you all. So the um, the the purpose, uh, and I guess I'll um, I'll read, I'll read through this. Uh, the purpose of the planning board, uh, first, we'd like to uh, we would like to thank everyone for bringing this to us. This conversation's been going on since uh late twenty thirteen, uh, when the votes and efforts of the Winthrop is Worth It uh made the relocation of the middle school a reality. So that's going back uh quite some time, seven plus years. Um, uh, need to recognize the many endeavors that have taken place before us. So yes, so that is uh from a master plan and the Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, the Aruzioni Community Center Initiative was another sort of community uh put together uh group. Win twenty thirty Community Visioning, and each initiative uh brought together ideas and research on the middle school parcel and its future. Uh, the robust public input was gathered through uh public comment workshops and virtual and in person and surveys from hundreds of our community members. Uh, probably could have said thousands, but I just wanted to be on the safe side. Um, in twenty seventeen, the C, the master plan middle school is the single most catalytic opportunity with great potential for more businesses and jobs. And in twenty twenty, the community input from uh, you know, nearly eight hundred or so online poll responses through Win twenty thirty visioned that redevelopment of the site was a high consensus priority community goal. So most recently, the town council's joint subcommittees on economic development and rules and ordinance focused on clarifying boundaries, recommending zoning, and putting protections in place for the surrounding area and community at large. Some of the recommendations we reviewed were site-specific, such as the zoning of the parcels themselves, while others had both site and broader implications, because they actually changed the 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 rules within a zone, and that zone is not just parcel-specific. So while the language uh of our motions may differ from those that came before us from this uh joint subcommittee, we hope that you will be happy to find that they focus on the same zoning and critical ordinance changes related to parking, height, and mixed use that are needed to move uh move forward while mitigating risk to abutters in the larger community. Three main principles guided the planning board's deliberation on these matters. Zoning for maximum flexibility to allow the town to select from a wide range of potential projects slash uses moving forward. During our public comment, we heard many uses suggested for the site, ranging from housing and hotel to mixed use and public buildings. Uh, zoning for feasibility, we want to set the table for a successful development that is economically possible and not overly constrained while providing critical protection to abutters and community and the community. And zoning for consistency, and this might not be so obvious to members of the public, but zoning for consistency to establish a process and rules that are clear for the town leadership, potential developers, and the larger community to navigate. Um, the otherwise, uh, multiple zoning designations would come with divergent district standards and a lack of clear jurisdictional authority between the planning board and the Board of Appeals specifically with. Um, this would further complicate and significantly de- delay the review and approval of any future proposals. Our recommendations. The Winthrop Planning Board, through a series of unanimous approved motions, offer the following recommendations to the town council for the zoning of the former middle school, auditorium, gymnasium, and ice rink sites, and other related zoning bylaw matters. These interdependent motions should be considered as a single comprehensive recommendation from the Winthrop Planning Board. So motion one, change to zoning ordinance. Uh, we're suggesting that the section modify, uh, the town council modifies section seventeen fifty to ten parking requirements for the Center Business District and replace uh this section entirely um with this uh verbiage below. I'm just, if it, if it pleases the council, I don't know if it ma- if it makes sense to um to just explain the highlights of this and then enter this um into record separately. I don't.
I think you you could just give us the highlights, give us your three motions, and then we can go into uh accepting the recommendation, then we can have discussion, questions from the councils, questions from the planning board.
Okay.
Bob, were you gonna go into the slides that we had prepared that are a little more like visually engaging?
Yeah, is that um uh uh, President Boncori, is is uh the slides that we have that um are graphic representations of some of the uh, the ideas and the rationale behind it and some of the support? Does that wait till discussion, or would you like me to go about this that way as well?
You know, I I don't know that we we need all that. I I wanted you to put the motions forward as your recommendations, because uh I don't know if everybody that's watching or that's listening has seen them, and and that's why I wanted that. But I don't think we have to go into all the rationale, because we'll put it uh we'll, we'll put that maybe in discussion. But at the same time, all these slides can all go on uh the town website, so everybody can see this report in its entirety in the slides. But I think for the purpose of the council, we've seen this. So I think I, you just have to present it and say what your three uh motions are, and I think we can go forward from there.
Right. Isn't that kind of what our slides, I was, uh, we had slides that were sort of trying to tell the story a little bit more than just walking through the memo that you've already read? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah.
I would suggest switching over to that, which are, the slides contained our recommendations in a way that doesn't involve just looking at it, but word doc.
Okay, are these the slides that are up there now laying the groundwork? Is that what you?
Yeah, so there, there are uh slides, and then within them contain the motions. They're not just um if if you want me to just do the motions, I just feel like we're leaving a lot of information on the on the table about.
Okay.
Why, if that's.
Go ahead. This is your, this is your presentation.
Sorry, um, yeah, that's okay, because um, I I love hearing myself talk, but um, that was a lot of talking, so um. So I just, I just wanted to just to skip through and and um counselor, uh, council president, you you've, you've explained the, how the laying the groundwork has happened and um starting all the way back from seventeen. Um, these recommendations and implementations from going back to the master plan about enhancing the public realm and increasing residential density, strengthening businesses, promoting thoughtful development, and developing uh funding strategies, which will also be key to success. Um, we also heard uh within our public, from our public input. You know, I'll just pull this up so you can all see it. Um, the public input, this is a sort of word cloud that takes into effect all the comments that were received during Winthrop twenty thirty about foot traffic and mixed use and the center, places for meeting, housing, open space, and residence jump out. And then that is the um, the catalytic opportunity and um for housing and neighborhood, job economics, and so on. Uh, that also came out of Win twenty thirty. These were the motions that we received um from the Joint Committee and through the planning board. And as we saw them, um, they both fell into, as I mentioned, site-specific and site and broader implications. The zoning of the parcels, parcel one being auditorium, gym uh and rink uh to C.B. Uh, and then the middle school primarily that site to residential A, which would be uh two and uh one and two family housing. Uh, there were also a series of other um recommendations that came before us, which had to do with uh change in parking, deleting payment in lieu of parking, zoning change in height, which was limiting height adjacent to residential A for um two and a half stories and thirty-five feet over seventy-five feet. Um, and uh lowering the minimum requirements for uh floor retail from one hundred percent to twenty-five percent. And so um, as as I mentioned, you know, these might affect those sites only um, because zoning uh was affecting those sites, but these, uh, if you made a change over on this column, you'd be affecting anything within the Central Business District, for example. So the two sites, just to give folks context, site one that we're talking about uh is auditorium, gymnasium, uh Larson Rink Site. Site two is primarily the middle school site, although partially uh comes across um over over the line. Uh, you can see it here. This is that map I was referencing that had the um odd uh number on it, so apologies for that. But uh, that's where that it came from. And so we had a series of very broad goals, uh, broad goals about the um we were hearing from the community about cas- catalyst for positive change, the re- revitalization, uh, trying to find funding sources, both sales, short-term, and property tax revenue, long-term, public amenity spaces uh for the reconstruction or renovation of the rink and or gym, uh, and then a public amenity to preserve open space, uh Ingleside Park, as well as uh uh mitigating impacts, right? So we're trying to kind of mitigate all of those things. Zoning for uh, so there were three guiding principles that kept us going um here, and that is uh zoning for maximum flexibility. And this is allowing the town to select from a wide range of potential projects uh and uses moving forward. Zoning for feasibility, so it's economically possible and not overly constrained. And zoning for consistency, as I mentioned, so there's a a single path, a single jurisdictional authority. Um, so folks aren't having to go to two different sets of meetings to try to work through um how this thing goes through. So related to flexibility, uh, the two obvious um zoning uh things that came before us or that were suggested to us was thinking about residential A as well as Center Business District. Um, so um residential A, single-family detached dwellings, two-family detached dwellings, semi-detached dwellings, two families, so duplexes, uh religious purposes, educational uses, agricultural use, home occupation, and outdoor recreation. And center business, when you combine their mixed-use components, has essentially all of those components in that, all of those potential uses within it, as well as some of the other things that we were hearing about, some retail, some public buildings, uh, and um and 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 alike. So thinking about how that, and lodging, we also heard hotel. So we're we're thinking that about um allowable uses when we're thinking about flexibility. So motion one. Motion one, uh, Julia, did you want to speak to this slide?
Yeah, I mean, we we can, we can breeze through this since we have it, we have it in our letter, but the the recommendation we made about the in-lu fee, the parking in-lu fee, since we do have this on the books, we looked at how other cities are using this, and essentially that we have it on paper, but we don't utilize it. We don't have the infrastructure to utilize it. So we are recommending, um, since this is a fee, to offset the need for parking or to build that parking somewhere else, or to subsidize the maintenance of parking stay in a shared lot. Since most of our uh excess surface parking in the center is actually in private lots, so it is actually revenue that we could use if it were managed properly and put into a fund. So this slide is just about what what that is, why you would have a parking in-lu uh fee. Um, it gives you more space, so you don't have as much space for cars on a site where you could be more space for green space, more space for our rink or rec center, or our housing for people over cars, all these things. Um, and because it, yes, all these things, we can, we can breeze through this. Um, it's a tool, you need a magic fund, so we're actually re- recommending it that that we have that fund set up. We were able to verify that we don't, in fact, right now, so there needs to be a jet, a fund, so you don't just put that money into the ethers and it may or may not get used for the purpose that is there, which is really as a management strategy, that if you're not going to put that parking space on site, you're going to offset it by putting it somewhere else or investing in other means to decrease the demand for parking period. So better bike infrastructure, better transit service, car share, you know, zipcar spaces, things like that, which ultimately contribute to a more walkable, human-centered Winthrop Center, which I think is ultimately what we all want. We just want it to be accessible. So it's just examen- examples of how other cities in Massachusetts have in-lu fees, and by and large, most of them have used the in-lu fees to put into a fund to actually build a structure or to subsidize the construction of a structure. Um, and then they'll actually stop paying for it. But we're recommending that we do keep the fee, but raise it significantly, because two thousand dollars a space is kind of a drop in the bucket. It's like blink in the eye, fine, I'll just pay you two thousand dollars and walk away. This is valuable real estate, so we're recommending to raise it to a one-time fee of twenty thousand dollars. That's serious revenue that we can use to actually offset, to build that uh decrease the demand for parking somewhere else, put into a fee, do something good with that money, and it's not going to be a lot, because that's still a lot of money. Um, it's worth recognizing that the parking uh minimums in the C.B. zoning, if we were to approve this, are already quite low. So it's quite likely that uh any developer would not be utilizing this that much. So it's a tool that we're recommending that we keep to have as an option, and we are recommending that go through the planning board. It's not that any, they can't just check a box and say, nope, no parking. I'm gonna give you two hundred thousand dollars. There you go. It's not like that. There's a process. It's a managed fund. There's a recruited process in the decision-making. So it's kind of on a case-by-case, but we thought it's a valuable tool to at least keep and use it for what it's intended to do.
So um, the recommendation that came before us was to eliminate it and uh and uh completely. Um, and what we, what we came back with is limiting the ability to, um, you know, kind of pay for your do a payment in lieu of parking for no more than fifty percent of your required parking spaces. And that would be required through a special permit through the planning board, because this is a
Right.
a C.B. related matter only, and that that cost would be, um, you know, we we've increased it. It was two thousand dollars. Now it's twenty thousand dollars, or the approximate cost of a structured parking space. So it's not a kind of quick and easy get-out-of-jail-free card like it was. And um about uh, and and just made some recommendations on um uh, you know, uh, what that could be used for. So that is the recommendation back to the town.
Okay, that's motion one.
Motion one.
Okay.
Sorry, motion one, yes.
We get it.
All right. So um, I'm gonna just keep going here. So motion to change uh the zoning ordinance height limitations. So um, in here, we're looking at, and and Anna's probably gonna uh bail me out in a second here, but in here, where we're looking at a specific recommendation about setting a seventy-five-foot uh kind of no-fly zone adjacent to a residential um neighborhood. And so what we've, what we've done here is uh highlighted uh the rules that are currently existing now. And um also just trying to um make sure people understand what these limits are. So these are highlighting the districts and their setbacks in their lot coverage. And then we went through as a group, and Anna did all of the heavy lifting here, so I won't want to take any uh steam away um of this, but looking and testing out what it really means when we say, hey, make one of these lots residential A and one of these lots C.B., and what that means. And so what you're seeing here at a high level, I'll just, I'll just explain a little bit, and then Anna will will bail me out, is that there are rules about what you can do here. So uh, to, on the left, that the left parcel, which is parcel two, is residential A. And there are certain setbacks that are affecting residential A. And those um footprints, those dash lines and footprints here would be really what the maximum that you could build out on those particular spaces. And um, you can see it's a very strained and very um awkward-shaped lot. It's not very easily to break it up into three or four lots, as as was mentioned during uh public comment. It's a very difficult uh ask, and uh it almost is counter to what I think the goals are of having something that is uh in fitting with um the context uh of the neighborhood. The context of the neighborhood, to give it, to to put it in perspective, the lots in that neighborhood are currently illegal uh in terms of their footprint size. You can see how. You can see how small some of the housing lots are right along Wheelock and Waldmar and Pauline. So the other thing, this does not represent a building. This is just sort of a maximum that, you know, could be built there. It's not also assuming that there is no rink. It's just sort of showing you generically what zoning means in that space. Anna, am I forgetting anything major with these?
I would like to reiterate that these are not building shapes, that they are kind of envelopes that are building, they are the limits of where a building might poke through. So we're not implying that there is a building that takes up this much space on the site.
Yeah, there are lot coverage, you know, and we've got a, there's a ninety percent lot coverage maximum. That's if the whole lot is used. So I think, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so this, each one, there were a series of these, and each looked at a different scenario. This looks at the ask of putting zoning parcel two as residential and the center business district, and the parcel one is the center business district. And of course, what happens then is the center business district, under current rules, is limited to thirty-five feet or two and a half stories. And two and a half stories for a multi-use project is kind of a meaningless number. So that's a problem we would need to address as well. And that is a really strong limitation on what could be built on the parcel on the right.
So again, we tested a few of these, and I want to go to the ones that are more looking at what the recommendation is, but we can, and we can circle back to these during any discussion or any questions about it. So Anna, and again, these are not buildings. These are the kind of understanding of what goes on here. So Anna, on this one, this is parcels one and two, central business. And whether this is taking into account, and you can see a setback that's essentially in line with some of the residential that's right on, right in line on Wheelock. And that is with a ten-foot setback. And so that means from the ten-foot setback, you can go up to thirty-five-foot height. And then from that, an additional foot for every foot back. So you can get up to forty-eight feet, but you'd have to be back an additional, was it another twelve feet, thirteen feet, to get back up to maximum height of forty-eight?
Bob? Can you go back one slide? Because there is actually something, there's a little finer point. I think this is what you were describing. So this one had a little bit of that graduated setback on Wheelock and Waldmar. We did not actually add that language on that street into our motion. However, rules and ordinances could easily do that with five words into one of the footnotes. So I think that could easily be addressed without much change if that setback is something I'd like to add. But if you go, so if you go back to what we did propose, because we were really mindful of allowing some flexibility with the understanding that zoning is, it's a blunt instrument, and you're not going to get a lot of fine control, and that some of what the town needs to ask for needs to be done in the RFP process. And that will also give a much finer ability to control what our, how, you know, making sure that the project meets the town's goals along all of its edges. But this would allow, up against the residential sites to the north, it does have that graduated line. So you'd have to, if you want to go up higher, you've got to set your building back further from the property line. There are setbacks also against each of those frontages so that they're not going to be building right on the property line against a residential district. And then another finer point, if you go to the next slide that we tested, it's a little strange, but we discussed how developers could say the front door is not the side of the property that you'd expected. And so we wanted to make sure there was a provision that if a developer was developing both sites together and they called Wheelock or Waldmar the front door, that we made sure that there was a setback on those streets that isn't already in our zoning code.
Correct.
So that's what this slide was about.
Yep, that's great. So this motion two was to change the maximum number of stories to four and change the maximum height to forty-eight in the table of dimensional regulations. Replace the footnote in its entirety where adjacent to a property line bordering a residential district, maximum height shall be no more than thirty-five feet at the minimum setback, and then that stepped additional height, the maximum allowable forty-eight feet for each additional foot. Yes, and the maximum number of stories shall be three, where the height maximum allowed is less than forty-eight feet. So, and then we're adding a footnote specifically for Waldmar and Wheelock streets that would preclude the CB considering those streets are frontage and still having the same side yard setback protections of the ten feet.
Thank you. That's motion two.
So motion, motion three is change the, change the zoning ordinance related to mixed use. And in a nutshell, what this project is meant to do, this isn't even a project. What this zoning is meant to do is eventually create a project that helps create, helps support the existing businesses. And I heard that pretty loud and clear again during public comment tonight, that just because it's center business district doesn't mean we're building that much more retail space. And in fact, what this does is allow, at the discretion of the board, to say that maximum street-facing dwelling units do not exceed seventy-five percent of the street frontage. So, you know, there's a lot of ifs in this, but if this goes to mixed use and if housing is one of those uses, it is allowing up to, not to exceed seventy-five percent of the street frontage to become actual housing down at that level. And that is what we're trying to do to, you know, we're trying to support the businesses, not put them out of business by creating a bunch more retail space down there.
Thank you. Onto four.
Onto four, motion for zoning designations. So we, when we received this, it was two parcels. We think of zoning more as a sort of district-wide. And again, thinking about it for those reasons, we thought of this whole recommendation to be a central business district. So the full extents, so the full limits of both of those parcels. And the reason we did this, central business district, to effectively span across Pauline Street for future development to be consistent with adjacent parcels and scale of the current buildings on site, and the town to have the necessary flexibility in those allowable uses for any future development and for consistency in both authority and oversight of any future development and public comment process. So that's what, those are the big driving factors between that for us. So that's what I had on the motions. There was a series of other future considerations, but I'll stop there and leave that for our discussion after. But I would love to talk about the deal.
Okay, I will entertain a motion by one of the councillors to accept the recommendations and review of the planning board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Discussion, President.
Motion by, I think it was councillor Farino, seconded by councillor DeMarco, that we accept the review and recommendations of the planning board and send it forward to the town council's Rules and Ordinance Committee. Okay, any discussion on that by the council? Councillor DeMarco.
Thank you, and I want to thank the planning board for all the hard work you guys have done. Bob, I remember when we, back in October of two thousand nineteen, talking about this. You said, we got to take care of this site first or next. And, you know, a year and a half later, here we are. I think COVID probably played a little bit of part of that, but, you know. A lot of, my instinct is to accept the recommendation of the planning board, because I think it gives us more options on what to do with the site. That being said, you know, the RFP process is really what I wanted to talk about tonight. Because that's on us. I mean, zoning is zoning. We need as many options as possible, but with the RFP process, you know, I kind of agree with Cheryl Howard, who spoke earlier during public comment. We can take some of the public's input into what they want with this project and put that in play and put ramifications on how we accept the RFP process. There should definitely be some sort of RFP committee that looks at this and puts certain parameters in place on what we're going to do. First off, the Waldmar residents have a legitimate issue. And if I lived there, I wouldn't want a four-story building in front of me as well. So that's something an RFP committee should look at. As far as the rink is concerned, because I heard a couple people talk about the rink, I would just like to state that on June fifth, two thousand eighteen, there was a motion put forward by councillor Littori on the town council. And the motion by councillor Littori was to remove the Larson Rink out of the middle school project. That was seconded by councillor Calla, and that motion passed. So as far as I'm concerned, the rink is not even an option at this point, based on that previous motion, unless somebody tells me differently. And finally, I mean, the one thing I am concerned about is open space. I think we all want more open space. I don't want to see an inch of Ingleside Park touched. So I mean, those are pretty much the three things that I'm concerned about is, you know, finding a way for the RFP, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy, you know, but maybe we can make eighty percent of the people happy. Maybe we can make eighty-five percent of the people happy. Let's take care of the height by Waldmar. Let's take care of Ingleside Park, and let's keep the rink and build our RFP around that. But I plan to support the zoning recommendations by the planning board. I think they've done, they've done a lot of hard work, and I appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor DeMarco, as well as I do. I want to thank publicly the planning board for all the work they put into this. They've done a great job. But the issue here is zoning, and we are taking their recommendations to adopt the zoning and sending it to the Rules and Ordinance Committee, because they make the final say, and then the council votes on it. And please, they goes out, it has to go from the town manager. We've already got some people that are very interested in it. And I've always seen one design that I think is excellent because it uses the existing footprint without, you know, hurting anybody in the neighborhood, and it keeps the rink, and it adds a theater, and it adds a gym. And it might be the right one to go. But that's not a decision for the council to make. Council's decision is only tonight on this motion to accept this recommendation and forward it to the Committee on Rules and Ordinance. Is there any further discussion on that issue, councillor Holman?
Thank you, President Boncorry. I just want to second what Rob said. I think the, I agree that the RFP is where we're going to define usage. I think that the panel of experts, which is the planning board, has done a lot of work and has done valuable work. We, as councillors on the joint committee, we are not experts in zoning by any stretch of the imagination. But, you know, that's why we handed this to planning, because they are architects and contractors and lawyers, and they can help us with this zoning. So I, when they say that the CBD is what's feasible and what's best for the site, I'm going to believe what they're telling me. I think that that's what's best for this town. And I think that the CBD, as Rob explained, putting these parcels in the CBD would allow every aspect of residential A without the limitations of residential A. And I think that's an important point as well. I agree with their recommendation of potentially putting forth, you know, that's later in the report about putting forth some sort of statement about not one day without a rink in town. I think that's, we've heard that loud and clear from the town, we are a hockey town. We do not want to get rid of a rink, you know. So I think it's important, and it's easy enough to make some sort of statement about not one day without a rink. However, I do think I agree with Rob and other members of the council and the planning board that this should be put in the CBD. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councillor Christopher.
Thank you.
Vice President Christopher, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. I also do want to thank everyone on the planning board for the hard work with this. I do, I agree, I think narrowly that with the, with the center business district designation for this site, that it works, and it works. It has a potential to work well, especially given knowing what we, that we have in our RFP process in front of us. But I do, one thing that I did want to raise as a potential issue is the fact that when changing the zoning for the middle school, we're also changing the zoning for our entire center business district, which is something that we took a lot of care in designing over the past two years. I think two years ago, we went about parcel by parcel. And I think that it's important that, you know, that notice requirements are followed and that we make sure that all of my constituents in the center understand that this could potentially have an impact on zoning recommendations in that whole neighborhood, not just the middle school site. So I think that that's an important thing to take into account in regards to the payments and parking thing. I think it's a great suggestion, a great recommendation. I actually made a very similar one two years ago that was rejected by the planning board consequently. And I, but I'm happy to see that being put into place. There's been a lot of criticism, and I don't think it was necessarily necessarily always justified, because I think it was unclear in a lot of ways how it would actually be applied, and it has been applied different ways in different instances. I don't think that that's a problem with this. And I also agree with the, with the mixed-use changes. I think that that's going to be very beneficial to, not just in the center, but across the town. I think that that's something that we've seen across the town as an issue. And I think that this allows for more flexibility so that we won't see, you know, as many vacant storefronts as we have. But I'm excited to continue, to continue this process and carry the torch from here. So thank you guys again.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anybody? Here, councillor Terry.
Thank you. I also want to thank the planning board for their hard work. I mean, there are so many committees in this town. They're putting a heck of a lot of effort to do a lot of things. They're not always going to be a hundred percent agreed upon. Nothing is. And I'm not going to say what my thoughts are tonight on this. I think it's important to talk to the residents again, get more feedback once they've adopted this and once they understand this. I think councillor Christopher, vice president Christopher, just made some very good points about the residence and center area and how these potential changes could affect them, and I think it's important for them to understand that. I firmly agree with councillor DeMarco on the most important process here. It's going to be the RFP process. And that's when we're going to, we could pretty much define what we would like to see there. And I think President Boncorry made a comment about a plan he had seen. I'm sure there's a couple out there, and I have as well. Things that I think could be very attractive down there and beneficial to the town in a lot of ways, not just, you know, in terms of units, but in terms of community access and maintaining programs that have been down there for a long time. So, you know, this is, this is the beginning of, you know, it's a long journey, but this is kind of the beginning here. Again, we couldn't have done it without the planning board to get at this point. There'll be discussion on what their recommendations are, and ultimately, we will vote within the next three months. And again, the most important process, and this is where we want community involvement too, is on the RFP process, because that's when we're going to basically put out there what we want to see. But again, I thank the planning board for their recommendations. And I would like to see if, if I, if I do see Rachel Kelly out there as a planner, I would like to hear her recommendations from. I would like to hear her recommendations from listening to the planning board, if that's possible.
Good evening. Absolutely support the planning board's recommendations, all four of them. They've allowed, they're allowing for the town to have some creativity in that space, bring in some revenue, which we definitely need. And it's, it's kind of broadening that area and allowing, you know, like I said, some creativity in that space. I 100% support, support their motions. In addition to that, just because it's come up, I've already sort of started, I wouldn't say started the RFP process, but I've started the research process. I've already talked to legal, I've talked to procurement, met with, met with procurement about getting started on learning where our strengths lie and where we can, you know, determine what we want as well as what we don't want. Procurement's doing some research on that. And then we've, we have some, a few examples from a few different towns and we're requesting more from other cities in this general area. We also have a pretty, pretty significant list of things that we want to see and obviously welcome to more and would absolutely like to see an RFP committee or an RFP group. I think that that would be extremely helpful and, you know, a good opportunity for the community to weigh in. So in full support and also in full support of, or I'm in agreement that RFP is where, where our strength will lie. And, you know, that process is already started. If anyone has anything, they can obviously send it over to me at any time.
Thank you very much, Rachel. And I'm glad to see that you're getting started and thinking about the RFP because it's important that once the Rules and Orders Committee is done, we get right on it. Thank you. Any, anyone else? Councilor Jero.
Thank you, Council President, and a very important thank you to the planning board. I called into many, if not all, of those meetings and listened in. And you had some really long ones and you stuck it through there. And we really appreciate all the hard work that has come to us and put forward in the slide deck and in the set of recommendations that you made. I just don't want to take up too much time here. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said, but just like to echo my fellow councillors about the RFP process. I think that is going to be something where we most definitely need as much community involvement as possible. And I will just say with the zoning that has been recommended to us, what I, what I appreciate most from the planning board is the level of flexibility that it provides. We're not limiting ourselves with this. We're, what we're doing is we're opening doors. And, you know, many ideas have been thrown out as to what folks would like to see on these parcels. And, you know, I think almost all of them are possible with, with the current zoning that has been provided. So, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this and look forward to moving forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jero. Seeing no one else, I would like to-
Council, Council President.
Oh, Council Farino, go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you, the planning board. I also attended probably 90% of your meetings and I did a great job. And you did what you were supposed to do. You came back with us with the recommendation and I applaud you for that. One of the things I do want to see going forward during our public discussion in the future is that a lot of people have asked for a community impact study, as Lisa Howard did. What, what impact is, is what type of development that's going to be there has on the community? Police, fire, public works, et cetera. We just spent $15 million, or we're spending close to $15 million on the center business district area and the immediate center that we all know and love. And we still don't know what that's going to bring to the community. And if, if a lot of development is needed at that site. We have a potential public safety building we need a place to put, which we're talking about using the golf course or the A field for Little League. I don't want to see recreation or parkland used for those purposes. That is covered under Article 97, no question. There is a question of Article 97 on Ingleside that needs to be addressed. I know we had an opinion from KMP, but other people have differed. And I've heard from other attorneys that said, no, that's not the case. So there's a different opinion there. And any developer needs to be aware of that also, if there may be potential ramifications of that. So these are just a few of the things. I have quite a list that I could go down. The rink's another issue. But once you rezone something, it is zoned. And it took us seven years to get to this point. It'll take seven years to get back to another point. So I just want to, you know, let's make sure that the rest of this process, we do our due diligence to really methodically digest everything and move on from there. But thank you, and I could go on. But I appreciate the planning board's efforts and also the Rules and Ordinance for getting this to this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. But I hope nothing ever takes seven years again. I hope that never happens. All right.
Senator Boncori?
Yes, Council Flacott.
I wanted to thank the planning board for all their effort too and for providing us their expertise. And I was glad to hear from Rachel and get her input. I look forward to the RFP process to get this project moving along. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think there's anyone left, Nick. Oh, all right. Here we know whether, comments, I would put this to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the review and recommendations of the planning board and forwarding them to our Rules and Ordinance of the Committee of the Council, signify by saying aye when your name is called. Who's called the role of the council?
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flacott.
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Terry.
Timmy, unmuted.
Yes, again. Thank you.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Conti.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncori.
Yes, unanimous motion carries. And we have put down as unanimous. Okay, I would like to, well, if anyone from the planning board would like to comment, I want to thank you all for all the hard work you've done. You've done your own much work to get this to this point. And hopefully now the Rules and Ordinance Committee will take it and have it answered within a month or so. And we can move forward with the RFP. But again, I want to thank you all for the work that you put in. Is there any comments now that it's been voted from the council or from the planning board? Council DiMarco again.
I know you guys are going to hate me for this, but is it possible that maybe, since it's the first time the public has heard a lot of this, that maybe we could have a second public comment section?
This meeting is called for only one public comment session. There will be another open meeting with the actual Rules and Orders Committee. And then there will be a full public hearing in the council where people can attend. And anybody can send in any correspondence they would like.
Thank you.
All right. Motion adjourned is in order. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilor Honan. Is there a second?
Second.
Council DiMarco, any discussion? There are none. All those in favor adjournment, please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flacott.
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Terry. Council Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Conti.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncori.
Yes.
Robert Carroll. I'm sorry.
You gotta keep going.
We're adjouring the whole meeting, I'm sorry.
Yes, we're adjouring the whole meeting. Please call it.
Don't, don't leave us here, please.
Robert Carroll.
The shortest meeting we've ever had.
Eda Demento. Anna Mercerat.
Yes.
Christopher Boyce.
Yes.
Steve Kudalakis.
Yes.
Julia Wallace.
Yes.
Okay, now Phil.
Thank you again. The motion carries. We are now adjourned. Everyone, please be safe. Please remember to follow the protocols because we did have almost 35 people in the past week, which came down with COVID, which is not good. So it's still a live pandemic. Please be safe, be careful and stay healthy. Thank you all for all the work that you do. Motion to adjourn is accepted. We are adjourned.
Thank you all. Good night.